Good evening, guests and fellow Toastmasters. A very warm welcome to a very special meeting of the Gabi Toastmasters Club. I am Chetan Prasad, your essay for today. Before the meeting starts, I would like to highlight a few points. This meeting will be blocked for one and a half hours, that is one hour thirty minutes. And you are expected to stay for that duration. Your video should be on and audio should be off. Audio should be on only when you are called to speak or need to speak. Regarding the topics of sex, religion and politics, even though Toastmaster International does not put any restriction on speaking on these topics. At the Verbis Toastmasters Club, however, we request all the speakers and role takers to be mindful and responsible. And abstain from expressing any controversial views on these sensitive topics. Also urge you to be cognizant of the fact that we as a club practice diversity and inclusion in letter and in spirit. Hence ensure there are no sexist, racist or any such undertones which create hostility and discomfort for members or guests. Let me now call upon the presiding officer of the meeting, distinguished Toastmaster Swarav Datta. Before that, I would like to introduce distinguished Toastmasters Swarav Datta. He is a charter member and club sponsor of the Gabi Toastmasters Club. He has been a director and in other Syrian leadership roles at Target, JCPenney and Hewlett Packard. Currently, the founder and director of an EduTech startup and also the vice president of marketing and business development at an analytics startup. Distinguished Toastmaster, fastest DTM of District ninety-two and winner of several Toastmaster Awards like Outstanding Toastmaster and Grand Slam Master Mentor. Current Division Director of Division B, District ninety-two Toastmasters International. Over to distinguished Toastmasters, Swarup.
Thank you so much Sergeant Adams, Toastmaster Chetan Prasad, can we have a big round of applause for our Sergeant Adams? Everyone in the meeting gets a round of applause except Sergeant Adams who we conveniently forget. So he is the one who actually starts the meeting. Chetan is the Sergeant, is the Sergeant Adams select of the Gabi Toastmasters Club for the next six months. And one of the most enthusiastic Toastmasters that we have at the Gabis. So thank you everyone for joining, special thanks to our guest Ashok Kumar Annamalai and also Toastmaster Dina McEnroy. Thank you so much Dina for joining us and we love to have you at the meeting. And as I told you, I will have one special table topic only for you. Today, we don't have a table topic session, but I will have a table topic only for you. I will put the table topic on chat and I would love to hear your, your speech on chat and then after that we will read out your speech. Can we have, I will also have our guest Ashok, but I think he is having an audio problem. So we will probably not be able to hear Ashok's thoughts about the meeting. But I also have the pleasure of welcoming our new members and quite a few new members have actually taken up roles today. This meeting is so, so, so spectacular. So we have one of the newest members, Sanjana Gharay, who is going to give a icebreaker speech. We have our newest member, technically Arvind Chandrabohan as our accountant. We have Toastmaster Prabha Luhaniwal as our listener. We have Toastmaster Juan Joseph as our evaluator. Oh my God, I think, oh, and we have got Toastmaster Deviani Nair, though Deviani is not a new, new really anymore. I think she has already done a speech and she is kind of gotten to the Gabi's groove of things. But still, the freshness and the newness will continue for some time, Deviani. And after that you will just get, you know, from strength to strength. And so the same applies for you, Devashis as well, I know you are there. But again, I, I don't think you are new anymore. So welcome everyone to the Gabi special meeting. We started this meeting because you know, we meet as a club, we meet on Saturdays, right? But now since we are touching almost fifty members, it is important for us to give everyone a space for them to grow. And for that, we need to provide speech slots, roles and every opportunity that, that is required for a person to invest in themselves and in their learning. And as we have started this, the entire month of June, we are going to have the special meetings of the, of the Gabi Toastmasters Club. Which will happen on Tuesdays at seven thirty to nine P M, this duration. And it is, it is extremely exciting and you know, I, I feel very ebullient about the fact that we are actually doing two meetings in a week. When I know that there are so many clubs which are actually struggling to conduct even one meeting in a week, right? So getting role takers for two meetings is not a very easy task. You know, you need almost sixteen people to sign up for various roles. In fact, more than that, if you consider the P O, the S A and we generally have four evaluations, five evaluations. So it's a, it's a humongous task and this is not, and this week was very special because I know that the VP Education or the XCOM. Did not play a very active role, the entire thing was planned, executed by the T mods. Who are doing a special project and I'll come to that shortly. Now, one, another very interesting thing is that the T mod himself is also not a very old timer at the Gabi. So I am really impressed with the fact that he actually connected with so many people. And he got all the role takers on his own and got them into the meeting. So with that, you know, I was trying to avoid the temptation of talking about the evaluation of the T mod, which I have already started because I am playing a double hat. So I am wearing a double hat today. So I resist that temptation and I will move on to introduce the T mod. And also since I am playing the role of the project evaluator of the T mod, I am also going to talk about the project that he is attempting. So the T mod today is attempting a project called manage online meeting. So what does this project entail? So the purpose of this project is for the member to practice facilitating an online meeting or leading a webinar. During the completion of this project, the member spent a great deal of time organizing and preparing to facilitate an online meeting or webinar. About this online meeting or webinar, in order to complete this evaluation, you must attend the webinar or online meeting, which I am doing. The member will deliver a well organized meeting or webinar. Depending on the type, the member may facilitate a discussion between others or disseminate information to attendees at the session. The member should use excellent facilitation and public speaking skills. So let us remember that for this particular project, we, the T mod doesn't only need to, you know, be a T mod. He actually has to do a lot of work behind the scenes for the meeting to be organized and post the meeting as well. So post the meeting, obviously that's left to assumptions or you know extrapolation that he will be doing it. But the pre-meeting, whatever I have observed, I will be sharing during the course of my evaluation. This is a project which is, it's one of the higher level projects, it's a project from level four of, of his path, which is motivational strategies. And the total duration is twenty to twenty-five minutes. I would request the timer to separately keep a tab and then report. How much is the total screen time that the T mod is having? We need a rough estimate, we don't need him to be exact, you know, it was twenty minutes and thirty seconds. I don't, we are not expecting something like that, but something in a ballpark range would help us. And let me now introduce the T mod for today. Our T mod is working as an analyst in fintech company in Bangalore, in Bangalore. His hobbies are reading and playing badminton, he likes being with people and sharing ideas and thoughts with them. Therefore, joining Toastmasters has provided him an opportunity to do what he loves. Let me introduce your Toastmaster of the day today, Toastmaster Pranav Potan.
Thank you, thank you, Swarup.
To you.
Thank you, Swarup. Thank you for giving lot of encouragement regarding the effort I am putting. But anyway, it is all thanks to the encouragement, all you, all the members of Gabi is giving me constantly. So today, let me give you one of my experience which I go through when I am in Bangalore. I work away from my home mostly and because of that, I have very little time to spend with my parents. But the little time I get to spend with them, I always cherish them in my memory. But few months back, it was my birthday and I had an opportunity to spend lot of time with them. For me, it was some birthday which I celebrated with them after a long time. And it was a trip down the memory lane. I remembered some of the beautiful memories I shared with them when I was with them during my childhood. The experiences I had when I had the dinner with them going out in the park during my birthday. Let me tell you Toastmasters, today we are going to experience the joy of taking a trip down the lane. Because we are all living in the hustle and bustle of a difficult world. Where we don't get many opportunities to experience some of the beautiful moments in our life. Is it, it seems so difficult, right? So much difficulty we are facing and then at that moment, we feel that we need to go to some of the beautiful memories in our life, cherishing them. But today, let me tell you, I am going to take you back to some of those beautiful memories. Just give me one point five hours of your time and I will do that. And only thing you have to do is just share some of the beautiful memories you have in your life. It happens after the prepared speeches somewhere between the breaks. I will be giving some of the people opportunity to share some of the beautiful memories of their life. Having said that, let us go to the first part of our, our agenda today. Today, we have three sections, mainly the prepared speeches, the evaluation and the general evaluation. The prepared speeches, there are three prepared speeches, out of which one is an icebreaker speech. Which is for four to six minutes, while the other prepared speeches is for five to seven minutes. And the third prepared speech is for ten to twelve minutes. But without the evaluation, which is the bread and butter of prepared speech, is there any use? So after the prepared speeches, we will be having a section where the evaluation will be done for the prepared speeches. And after that, we will have a general evaluator who will be giving a feedback on the general meeting. So our general evaluator today works as a silicon validation engineer at Texas Institute. He loves languages, foods, books and above all, meeting new people. Currently, he is serving as the D four director. Let us welcome Toastmaster Veera, inviting him to share the role and objective of the Tagel team today. Over to you, Toastmaster Veera.
Thank you so much Toastmaster of the day, Toastmaster Pranav. Please excuse my really glitchy video because of the dark background, it is not really coming up properly. But keeping that aside, I am sure that we are all in for a super exciting meeting today. And as the general evaluator, I will be evaluating the entire meetings proceedings right from the beginning till the end. And the fantastic things that we have done, have been doing and will be doing in the due course of the meeting. And also maybe any areas which we might need to focus on to take our meetings to the next level. So in order to assist me with this job, we have a wonderful team of Tag L role players. So let me introduce them one by one to hear from them what their role is going to be. First off, our timer is from Kolkata and our timer is someone who is super interested in experimenting with new flavors and understanding a lot of cultures. Our timer is also on constant lookout for exploring and experiencing a lot of new things. Let us put our hands together to welcome our timer for the day, Toastmaster Devashis, to explain your role, over to your Toastmaster Devashis.
Thank you, J Veera, for this introduction. Good evening, Toastmasters and guests. So my role as a timer is to note the time for the listeners, for the speakers and, and the, and the evaluators. So the time given for speaker is for icebreaker speeches four to six minutes. And in case of other speech, I mean, other speeches, five to seven minutes. And since there is a special speech for one of the speaker is, the time given is ten to twelve minutes. And in the, once the speaker attends the specific time limit, I will be showing green card. Let me just give a back. So I will be showing the green card when the timer completes a given time limit. Let's say in, in case of icebreaker speech, once the time limit is time, she attends the time of four minutes, I will be showing a background of green color. Once the speaker completes five minutes, I will be showing yellow color. And on completion of six minutes, I will be showing a red color. So the speaker will have, each speaker will have a grace period of thirty seconds to come to wrap up the speech. And, and yeah, so before, before handing over the, to general evaluator, I want to say that. As William Penman said, time is what we want most, but what we use worst. So it is important that we take control of the time and make most of it. Thank you, General Evaluator, Veera, over to you.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Devashis, for that brilliant introduction. Just a small reminder to the folks, for the speech evaluations, the timer cards will be shown at two, two and a half and three minutes. So let's move on with our next role player who is the R counter for the day. And our R counter today is an explorer of new possibilities that come lined up. And also comes from a diverse background of technologies, sports and science. So let's hear it from our R counter for the day, Toastmaster Arvind, over to you.
Thank you, Pran. Am I, am I visible, audible? Alright, okay. Yeah. My role for today, my role for today is basically to watch out for filler words, pauses, etcetera, like, uh, um, or that we use. And also other, you know, other, other crutches, cut sounds and filler words like, you know, maybe, etcetera. So as much as possible, be a little conscious about it and use, try and use these words minimally. I will be making a note of these words or the count in which, you know, I mean, how many counts or rather how many? How many times each evaluator, sorry, each, even each speaker evaluator would have used it during the session? And I will be showcasing it towards the end of the meeting. Over to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for us, Toastmaster Arvind. And yes, next up, our grammarian of the day is a travel buff, a music lover and a mom to two, a beautiful girl, Dhatri and a pet named Rowdy. So let's hear from our grammarian for the day, Toastmaster Shilpa, over to you.
Thank you, Veera, for that wonderful introduction. Good evening, each one of you. It's been a long time, I've been away from Gabi's a little while. Good to be back. So as a grammarian for today, I will listen to each one of you carefully to make note of two things, especially number one. The number of times the word of the day being used correctly and incorrectly. And the second one is the number of unnecessary words, sounds or pauses used by the speakers during the meeting. So in relevance to the theme, the word of the day is reminisce. Reminisce, I will spell it, R E M I N I S E. I will leave this word in the chat for you all to have a look at it. Which means that indulge in enjoyable recollection of past events. It is a verb, reminisce is a verb and you can use it as reminisce or reminiscing. For example, how do you use this word? I reminisce about me being active in Gabi's couple of months back and wondering what have I missed? So something like that. I would encourage everyone to use the word of the day and all the best. I will come back with the report towards the end of the meeting. Thank you again, back to you.
Brilliant, thank you so much, Toastmaster Shilpa, for that beautiful introduction. And yes, let's quickly hear from our listener for the day as well, what our listener's role is. And our listener today is a fun-loving, ambitious, sporty individual who loves exploring new places and also new cultures. Let's hear from our listener for the day, Toastmaster Prabha, over to you.
Thank you, Veera, and good evening, everyone. Also, my role today is to listen to everyone speaking in the, in this meeting. And I wonder why, why listening is important? Well, apart from many other reasons of having a great listening ability. I feel you can build, you can strengthen your personal and professional relationship. Well, how, how exactly? Well, when you are in conversation with the people, be it, be it one-on-one or within group, you are supposed to respond to them effectively, right? And how does, how can that happen when you are listening actively and effectively? So in order to build a professional and personal relationship, you, you need to listen carefully. And you can also avoid misunderstandings through effective listening. So today, at the end of the meeting, I will be listening, I will be preparing some questions for all of us. To test our listening abilities, yeah. Thank you, over to you, Veera.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Prabha, for that introduction and also the relationship tip that you gave us all. And yes, so with that, I would like to hand it back over to our Toastmaster of the day. By also reminding you all to please try to use the word of the day throughout. And if you see anyone using the word of the day, please show a big thumbs up as a sign of encouragement. And also feel free to unmute yourselves and give a thunder sound of applause after every speaker has done their part and left the virtual stage, yeah. Awesome, all the very best to all the speakers and back to you, Toastmaster of the day, Toastmaster Pranav.
Thank you, Toastmaster Veera, that was a lovely introduction of the Tagel team. With that, without any further delay, let's go to the first section of our meeting, the prepared speech section. So before calling the first speaker, I would like to call the evaluator of the first speaker. Toastmaster John Joseph, she come, she is a, she won District ninety-eight impromptu Premier League table topic contest. She is from Palawa Toastmasters Club Mumbai and she has also won E S C division level in the first position. Apart from contest and competition, she is also the V P P R of her club and learning the ropes of leadership through her role. By profession, she is a content writer, a voracious reader by passion and a music aficionado. She is always excited to meet her new people and interact with them. Let me call Toastmaster John to give the project details of her first speaker. Over to you, Toastmaster John.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Pranav, am I audible?
Yeah.
Thank you. My top target speaker for the day is Toastmaster Sanjana. And she is giving her speech from the path persuasive influence, level one project one, which is an icebreaker speech. The purpose of the speech is for the member to introduce themselves to the club and learn the basic structure of a public speech. Timer, please note, the timing is four to six minutes. All the best, Toastmaster Sanjana.
Okay, thank you, thank you, John, for that lovely description of the evaluation. With that, let me call the first speaker, Toastmaster Sanjana. She is a student at I A T Varanasi and is currently pursuing her B tech plus M tech in Mac and computing. She loves riding her dad's meteor, playing badminton, reading books on business, trekking and bike boarding. She is keen to start her own brand that will bring about a positive change in society. Toastmasters, remember, she is delivering her icebreaker speech. So as a custom of the Gabis, we need to give her a standing ovation when she completes the speech. Over to you, Sanjana, the transformation, Toastmaster Sanjana, Toastmaster Sanjana, the transformation.
As I stand before the mirror, I wonder, how have I become the person I am today? As I close my eyes, the stage is set for a tale of strength and struggle. And I remember the transformation. Back in the days of my sixth grade, I was a shining star, not only in academics, but also in drawing and public speaking. But alas, while my mind was firing in all cylinders, my physical activities resembled that of a sloth in a marathon. And my parents worried that I would soon become a sluggish snail. And so they got me enrolled in the nearest badminton club. Having played some outdoor badminton, I thought this would be a piece of cake. But it turned out otherwise. Picture a penguin trying to play badminton, backpack, stumbling over my own feet, swinging the racket like a confused windmill. And missing the shuttlecock with so much precision that any onlooker would burst out laughing. But I still continued and actually the results were showing up. Eventually, after two years of relentless effort, I progressed to the advanced level. A feat that most players achieve in their primary school. But who said being fashionably late applies only to parties? As I delve deeper into the world of badminton. I entered into a surreal chapter of my life. A face that still brings chills down my spine, something that I never, never want to relive. In search for accelerated growth, this girl got herself enrolled in a better badminton club. Where she found a group of players roughly of her age, who were nothing short of extraordinary. Every day, they embarked on exhilarating journeys, traveling to new cities, playing high stake matches. And bringing home a treasure trove of accolades. Their life was adorned with media coverage, interviews and sponsorships. Meanwhile, in the realm of her own existence, she was enticed in this monotonous cycle of homework assignments. And the same predictable faces. Allured by the word, she was attracted by the glamour and not by the arduous journey. Oh, how nice it would be to be like one of them. But this was expensive determination, young girl, literally. Badminton is costly. The five-day weekly training schedule costed six thousand per month and a high-end racket came with a hefty ten thousand price tag. So she spoke not to her parents, but to her head coach regarding her burning desire to improve. And he advised her to take up more training sessions by better shoes and better rackets. No wonder he was a great businessman and I now can understand why his club made so much money. Expenses skyrocketed, her, her father was spending thirty thousand just on her sports. Like a venomous snake's poison, the transformation began to set in, leading her astray from her true self. Her parents persistently warned her of going the wrong path. But no, this admin girl was busy preparing for the upcoming South Zone tournament. And not her class eleven final exams, which were just one month away. Her match was scheduled with a playoff, she had beaten thrice before. What relief, finally she could prove her parents wrong. The day of the match came and her match was announced. As soon as she entered into the court and it was time for action, came the shockwave. The pressure, the nervousness, what if I lose? What should my parents think of me? What should my coaches think of me? Those moments of disrespect, those moments of ignorance, everything came crashing down all at once. And even before the match had started, she had lost it. What happened during the match, I don't remember. But what I know is that she had lost it terribly. She had lost not only the match, but trust, confidence and hope. Truth hit her and it hit her hard. That day, she decided to become me again. I took an eighteen-month break from badminton and began to prepare for what Indians call the toughest exam in the world, J E E Advance. The day of my exam came and three months after the exam went in a haze. But what I remember is that I had won. I had won not only the exam, but trust, confidence and hope. I got a rank of three, one, three, two in the exam and got a seat in the prestigious I I T Varanasi. Do you know what? I could have wished for this incident to have never happened in my life. Those terrifying moments of emotional, social, mental and physical pressure. But I am glad that it did. Because as I open my eyes and I stand before the mirror, I can look at a stronger person. In I I T, I have started a new phase of my life where I wish to reignite my passion for public speaking through Toastmasters. And I am very confident that Toastmasters will help me in my journey of. And I'm very confident that Toastmasters will help me in my journey of becoming a more powerful me. As I stand proud and tall, I embrace the transformation. Thank you, back to you T M O D.
Wow, Sanjana, what the real breakers? I didn't feel so. It felt that you were someone who had completed two or three eleven in Toastmasters. Anyway, Gabis, let us all stand up and give her a standing ovation to Sanjana for her icebreaker speech. I request you all to stand up. With that, with that, we move to the second speech. But before the second speech, let me introduce the evaluator of the second speech. Toastmaster Laxmi. As a behavioral and leadership trainer, Laxmi found her ikkigai through her job with the Akshaya Patra Foundation. She facilitates training programs across India that uplift and motivates the frontline workers of her organization. And to uplift herself, her only go to place is Toastmasters. Let us invite Toastmaster Laxmi to give the project detail of her speaker. Over to you, Toastmaster Laxmi.
Thank you so, so much Toastmaster of the day, Toastmaster Pranav. A very good evening to all of you present here and especially to my target speaker. The target, my target speaker for the day is attempting her L four P one. Project from the presentation mastery path. Uh she is implementing the feedback that she project. And the feedback that she received was uh to reduce the speed and also to challenge herself to be more creative. Timer kindly note that the speech is five to seven minutes long. And I would also be evaluating along with this to ensure that the feedback from the previous project is implemented here. And also the other nuances of a good speech like the structure, body language and all of that. So, I would like to wish the speaker today all the very best as she takes upon her L four P one part two project. Thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Laxmi. With that, let us call upon the second speaker, Toastmaster Devayani. She says that her dad would describe her as the jack of all trades, master of none. It's like this proverb was made for her. She is eighteen years currently pursuing a bachelor's degree in political science and economics. The real reason behind this degree is because she loves to talk. Another thing she loves to do is dancing and she is a frequent participant in the college. The title of her speech is lessons in power, Toastmaster Devayani, Toastmaster Devayani lessons in power. Over to you. Yeah.
Was she beautiful, debatable, was she charming, probably? Was she bent on using her gender and her power to further her needs? Certainly, smart, charming, persuasive, daring. She ruled an empire and captivated two of the most powerful men of her time. Good evening fellow Toastmasters, when I think of powerful women, Michelle Obama or Drapada Murubu comes to mind. Can any Toastmaster here tell me powerful women they can think of? Anyone?
My mom.
Oh my, absolutely, I, my mom is an absolute super, super woman, so I get you on that point totally. Certainly, there have been amazing women throughout time who have exerted power and changed the course of history. Today, I will tell you the story of a powerful woman through the eras. She is the most famous woman of antiquity. Hers is a tale of power won, lost, regained and then lost forever as Egypt fell to the Roman Empire. She is none other than Cleopatra. Cleopatra was the last pharaoh of Egypt. A pharaoh is the title given to the ruler of the he- or head of an Egyptian empire. She ruled with absolute power and entertained richly. Egypt grew as a superpower during her reign with agricultural and economic growth. Her empire spanned far and wide. Writers say that this was the golden era of Egypt. Cleopatra was considered to be the epitome of beauty with brains. She heavily promoted research in fields of science and literature. Books say that Cleopatra knew about eight languages in her time. And the biggest library ever to not have existed before the common era was also her great library in Alexandria. As Indians, we pride ourselves in our glorious history and innovations in the field of science. Aryabhata, the Vedas, the creation of Ayurveda millions of years ago are still relevant to us now. Just like the old Indian scholars, Cleopatra was a scholar in her time. She had known to have created many chores and home remedies. One that stood out for me is that she found the cure for baldness. My dad would greatly appreciate her for that. This one particular incident really shows her intelligence and her feisty go getter attitude. She never shied away from challenges, especially those that mock her status. Because it was, it was, because it was unimaginable for the Europeans to think a woman can rule. So during one of her banquets, she said that she can consume millions of dollars worth of drinks. Everyone was shocked, how was this possible for her to consume something that worth so much? So, to win this bet, you know what she did? She took out one of her pearl earrings and dipped it in a glass of vinegar drink. After the pearl dissolved, she drank it, consuming about ten million dollars worth in one sitting. She won her bet. This is the true testament for her bringing a go getter attitude and science together. There are numerous stories that highlight her prowess as a suitable pharaoh. She was certainly a woman of great power. With her death, the Egyptian empire collapsed and Egypt became part of Rome. Reminiscing my first meeting with Cleopatra. It was through an encyclopedia that my uncle gifted me when I was ten years old. As I flipped through the pages adorned with sand structures, mummies and huge pyramids. I paused at the page that had her story written on it. I was surprised to know that a woman was head of one of the richest and the most advanced civilizations of the time. Something that stuck out to me other than her intelligence and her attitude was her diplomacy. She navigated a male dominated era with so much ease. She won people's hearts, acquired territories, traveled across North Africa and Europe and negotiated peace treaties. This state of calculated diplomacy that she showcased is what made ten year old Devayani decide. That she wants to take a similar path as Cleopatra. That she also wants to be there for people and negotiate for their needs. That's when I made up my mind to be a bureaucrat. I hope to keep the story of this queen in my mind while I try to achieve this dream. I think Cleopatra is a true girl boss and we all as women should be proud of her. No matter the value and modest slopes of her actions and behaviors could have been. I chose her because her methods are not approved by everyone. She sometimes used the back door to get what she wants. Her history is not all sunshine and roses. Even though she was equally loved and hated in her times, she is an example of a successful and influential female ruler. Not only in her era but even now. And we all can become one if we combine our knowledge and essence just like the queen of queens, Cleopatra did. Thank you.
Thank you Toastmaster Devayani, that was such a good speech, reminiscent of one of the greatest emperors of the time, Cleopatra. With that, let's move to the next speech. But before that, let me introduce the evaluator of the third speaker, Toastmaster Aparna. She is a passionate speaker, a hippie at heart, a mom at home and an entrepreneur by choice. Let uh, I, I would like to welcome Toastmaster Aparna to share the project details of the third speaker, Toastmaster Dwani. Over to you, Aparna.
Thank you very much Toastmaster Pranav. My target speaker today is attempting her level four project one. The project is managing difficult audience apart this presentation mastery. Timer please note, this is a ten to twelve minute speech. The purpose of this project is for the member to practice the skills needed to address audience challenges. When she presents outside of the Toastmasters club. So, over to you Toastmaster Pranav and to my target speaker, Break a Leg.
The third speaker, Toastmaster Dwani, is none other than my mentor and I am clearly looking forward to her speech. She is a keen learner and a secretary at the Gabi's Toastmaster Club. She is a triple crown winner and a path breaker. She is a communication skill coach by profession and artist by heart and a period educator by choice. Over to you Toastmaster Dwani, did you choose the right path? Toastmaster Dwani, Toastmaster Dwani, did you choose the right path?
Thank you so much Toastmaster of the day. Dwani, what are your future plans? You are at the end of your college year, what are you going to do? Are you going to go for masters or are you going to apply for job? Oh, I think you should totally offer masters. Oh, no, no, don't listen to her, I think you should totally go for a job and then apply for masters. Strange, right, how people around us tend to decide for ourselves whereas we're still stuck? What to do next? Fellow Toastmasters, I am sure you must have faced this kind of situation at some point or the other in your life. Where people around you influence your decision or make the decision for you. According to the economics and according to the behavioral economics report. It is said that five percent of people influence the ninety five percent of the crowd. Which means we humans are wired in a manner that we follow the crowd, having the sheep mentality. Let me tell you my story. When I was in college, I was pretty skeptical about my career options. Just because I thought it is customary to go for masters or go for a job for that matter. I started enrolling myself in it because my friends were doing it. And because I wanted to have a secure and a safe life. But little did I realize that this was not what I wanted. I didn't want to study further or I am not somebody who is a nine to five person for that matter. I was still thinking and I thought, okay, fine, let me just go for it. I enrolled myself in masters, I went and I started giving job interviews. Guess what? Nor I cleared my exams, my M B A exams and nor I got a job. At this point, I was stuck. I was in a catch twenty two situation. I did not know what to do next. People around me were posting stories on Instagram. About their fancy life, about their work culture and about their college life and how they are enjoying their college life.
Dwani, uh I had a question.
Yes.
Where did this phrase catch twenty two come from? Like, what is the origin of this phrase, like uh? Where did it come from?
Uh yes, a good question, I'm not a language expert here but according to my knowledge, I heard this from Rakesh Agarwal. He had used this, uh he is the founder of I C B I and he'd use this phrase and I thought it was really catching and. Catch twenty two situation means.
Like what do you catch in a catch twenty two situation, like you catch a ball or?
Okay, so it's just a ph- uh it's just a phrase which means that it helps you to. I mean, the meaning of this phrase is basically to overcome, to that you are in a, in a confused situation, you don't know what to do.
So you don't catch anything, so it's not like a cricket match.
It's kind of an E D M, it's kind of a phase, right, like we have uh jack of all and master of none, something similar to that. Okay, I hope I answered your question, so moving on. So, I was in a difficult situation and a difficult spot. People around me were getting jobs and you know they were posting their fancy stories whereas me, I was stuck in one particular situation. And I was at home sitting and still figuring out what to do next. I was so much of, in, I was all over my head and I was really confused. I had gush of emotions running down my spine, I had rollercoaster ride of emotions for that matter. And I started coming into that dungeon of just being away from everybody and everything. That's when I started reading, that, that's when I started reading about. I started inculcating a habit of reading self-help books for that matter. And when I started reading these books, it gave me a sense of direction, it gave me a sense of purpose. I was slowly coming out of my dark zone. And reading those books helped me realize. That it's not about running into the rat race and running fast. It's about you running into the rat race, taking your time, enjoying yourself and loving the work that you do by being consistent.
I think you also like running, no?
Yeah.
Do you like running?
Yes, I do.
So do you run like a ri- rat race?
What exactly a rat race?
Did you start running from the self, self-help?
Arvind likes biking. Why only talk about running?
But Dwani was talking about running, so I thought I'll check with Chaitanya if, you know, since he likes running too, I don't like.
Generally, if I don't go to gym.
I don't like running, I like biking, Arvind likes biking.
I think everybody has their own.
But I don't like biking, why are we talking about biking at all? We can also talk about cars, no?
I know, yeah.
Yeah, I totally agree.
You know, I like cars.
For that matter, I love riding and I love driving more than bikes, actually I'm not somebody, a two wheeler person. I'm somebody who loves to ride cars and I am.
Dwani, it's not about you.
Automatic vehicles or?
Riding or not, it's about sorrow, pinpointing, riding. Why can't we talk about cars also?
Yeah, we can, that's why I'm coming and I'm talking to you about car.
I have a car in Mangal, you tell me what place do you have, it's so much of traffic here. I don't even use my car nowadays, it's, I rarely.
I agree. Basically, you wanted to tell us that you have a car.
True, that is.
And two cents about, you know, how, since you were talking and I wanted to be a part of your conversation. But let me hold on over here and let me hold you guys over here, we'll have this discussions once I finish talking, okay? Now show me a thumbs up, please.
Excuse me, I just joined, what's happening?
Uh yes, so Nagish sir, I'm giving my speech and managing difficult audience. And I'm in between my speech and we are just going ahead with my journey of talking.
What is the topic?
The topic is, did you choose the right path?
Ah, okay.
So this is Toastmaster pathways, Nagish, they're talking, she's talking about the. I mean, she has taken a path in pathways and she's confused whether she'd made the right choice. I think it's a problem with her mentor, uh she is not getting the right mentor.
I thought it is raining here, she is talking about my path. To back home.
If you want, I can change her mentor.
No, no, that's not happening, no, please, hello, no, that's not happening, I think our conversation is getting deviated. Let's come back to the topic and then we'll discuss about this once the things, once I start, once I finish my speech. Yes, thank you so much, so I was talking, coming back to the context of running. I'll be, it's all about you being in that rat race, running in your own pace and doing something that you love by being consistent. Hence, with that thought in my mind, I started thinking, what is the thing that I love to do? I took a pen and paper and I started jotting down my points. I started writing down my strengths and my weaknesses. I started writing down my strengths and my weaknesses. Now, when I was doing so, I came to a realization that hey, I'm somebody who loves to talk and I'm somebody with a locatious nature. So why can't I turn it into a profession? Hence, now I had a purpose and direction. So I started in my journey, I started putting my A cap on and I started researching about the courses of public speaking. When I was doing that, I stumbled upon a course from this institute of becoming a soft skills trainer by ICBI, which is, the full form is Image Consulting Business Institution. Now, when I was doing so, I started researching and I started connecting with the founders and with the people of ICBI. They convinced me and I enrolled myself in ICBI and today I am a trainer, a certified soft skills trainer, a passionate public speaker who is speaking right now in front of you and an active member of Toastmasters International as well as to top it all. I am doing something that I love and I'm passionate about, passionate about. I chose the different path, I chose the uncertain path and I got out of my comfort zone. Following your passion does not mean that everything will be very flowery. Everything will be a happy sunset walk. You will fall, you will get.
Nancy, you like going out on sunset walks, right? Sunsets are very nice.
Am I an easy target? Why is everyone targeting me?
No, just ask.
Absolutely.
But you know, earlier Saurav talked about mentoring, her mentor is not right. So that's why I'm asking, am I an easy target? You know, this is not fair, Chaitanya, sorrow, where did back Nagish also? I'm not sure whether Nagish said anything, but this is not fair.
I didn't say anything, I didn't say anything.
Why are you being racist? Why do you want us to be fair? I mean, what's the problem with being dark? I mean, you are commenting on my skin color now.
You know, this was a woman, fair, not that fair, this fair.
Uh, Nancy, can I just pause you for some time and let me just?
But Dhwani, they are not being fair with me.
Very, very interesting.
But again, why fair, why can't we be dark?
It's really very interesting that I'm going to talk next and.
I think I need to have some English lessons from medium sorrow view or maybe I need to teach him something more, you know?
Surely you will do that, I'll help you and I will help you teach him certain kind of etiquette, but for now.
You really think this is possible?
Yeah.
This is sorrow we are talking about.
Yeah, we can teach him, everybody is teachable. But let me tell you that following your passion does not mean that everything will be happy, everything will be flowery. But following your passion, you will get hurt, you will fall, you will get bruises. There will be things that you have unlearned, but you'll have that fire, that genuine which we call it, that passion within you to move ahead and get up daily and show up at your work, work harder and you will work smarter. Following your passion will help you move forward and not backward. It will teach you to solve your problems and help you to have a go-getter attitude and be practical and solution oriented. I chose the right path, I escaped the sheep mentality and today I am doing something that I'm passionate about and adding value to people's lives. Now the question is, did you choose the right path? Think about it. Thank you.
Dhwani, did you choose the right mentor?
Yes, I totally did that and sorrow, no, no ways, I am not changing my mentor for what comes so and whatever come in the way.
I'm not talking.
You're listening, you're listening sorrow.
Yeah, so nobody is changing my mentor for that.
Thank you, Dhwani.
Thank you, bye.
Pranav, it's your time to speak.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, yeah, uh, can you hear me? I lost the connection between. Um, that was such a lovely talk about passion, Dhwani. By the way, Gabby, there is a small change. Now the timer is Chaitanya. Also, since we had having, since we had the icebreaker today, we won't be having the old today because it's a custom in Gabby's. So we are moving to the next part, the evaluation of the speech. But before that, let me ask you, would anybody want to share some experience you had when you take a trip down the memory lane? Anybody here? What about Arvind, Devashish?
What trip down?
No one? Toastmasters. Yeah, the memories that you had in the past.
Past life memory?
Yeah.
I'm still in the previous project mood actually.
Okay, okay, nobody is there. There is a member who has shared some memories which we had in the past. Okay, so TM Sanjana, she has said that, she says that, so her dad is strict and somebody who spoils her the most, she has a very special attachment with him. He is her best friend and she narrates the memory with her dad when her dad went back to, went to Australia, when she was in class, on an on-chore duty and the project got extended and for ten months he was away. And then when finally, when finally she got to meet her, meet her dad, it was a very great experience for her because also she was moving to a foreign country. She was happy that she could finally meet her dad and at that time, she felt that it was one of the best moments of her life. So if anybody here does not have anything to share, let me go to the second part of the meeting, the evaluation part. So for that, I would like to first invite Toastmaster Dhwani for evaluating our first speaker.
Thank you TM Odi, Pranav, am I audible? Thank you. Congratulations Toastmaster Sanjana, it was your first speech ever, your icebreaker speech. How did you feel, please tell me that? Kindly unmute yourself and tell.
Yeah, it was a very good experience and I was really, really excited.
Your excitement literally crammed through when you spoke to us. As your evaluator, I was thinking it's an icebreaker speech, it will be easy thing to evaluate, you know? But then you started speaking and I was like, we have a word wizard, I miss. The kind of words you use, let me just put in the phrases like sloth in a marathon, sariya chakravarti of my life. I felt like I was not listening to a speech but reading a literary book, some kind of a great novel, some kind of a great story written by, you know, Murakami. If you know who is Murakami, he is one of my favorite authors. And I felt I was reading a Murakami story because the way you speak, your language, your vocabulary is amazing. It is more than what do you say extraordinary. So kudos to you, congratulations for that. That is an amazing talent you already have. Your voice toning, body language and the ability to role play. It literally was so good that I didn't feel that this was your first speech. And I am sure you have given speeches before, there's no way you can come up and say that you are naturally so talented. Though it is possible because the way you used your voice, you modulated your voice, your body language and role playing was amazing. Overall, I'll tell you, it didn't feel like an icebreaker speech. It felt like I'm listening to someone who's a seasoned speaker, so amazing icebreaker. But as your evaluator, my job is not to just praise you, right? It's to give you constructive feedback. So here are some points that I feel that will help you to go from excellent speaker to extraordinary. The first thing, remember this word, too fast. When you speak, you speak too fast. Now the problem is what you know? If I'm reading, I can read it on my pace, as I said, it felt like a beautiful literary story. But when I'm listening, I need to listen to every word and I need some milliseconds to understand what you're saying. If you speak too fast without pauses, what happens is that even though it's a beautiful speech, I am not able to understand every single part of your speech. So focus on speaking a little slowly, add more pauses to your story, okay? That's the first thing. Second thing, you used I, then you went to second person and described she when you spoke about the badminton story and then you came back to I. I would suggest that when you're giving a speech, especially an icebreaker speech, right? Go with first person, speak as if everything is happening to yourself. Because what happens, when you speak as if the event is happening to yourself, there is an emotional connect that audience connects better. When you speak as if the event is happening to someone else, it's just a story. It's your icebreaker speech, I want to know what happens to Sanjana, I want to feel what Sanjana felt, not she felt or he felt. Okay, so when you give a speech in first person, it's amazing, it feels more connected to the audience. Third point is conclusion, all right? You spoke about transformation. How did you transform? I got it, you went to IIT, the lessons you learned and then you went to IT. But what was the core of the transformation? What were the lessons that you learned? If you could share that lessons and point us to us so that we can take that lessons back. What is the call of action? What is the message that you want to give us? Right, that conclusion need to have that message, that lessons that you have learned. Overall, amazing speech for an icebreaker. Just focus on speaking slowly, remember speaking first person, it's not a story, it's a speech. So I need to connect with you. And third point is power packed and conclusion with a call of action. All the best for your next, it was wonderful listening.
Thank you Toastmaster Dhwani. Now we introduce, now we call upon the second evaluator, Leshmi to give the feedback on the second speech.
Thank you Toastmaster of the day, just give me a second. Lessons of power or not, it surely was a speech filled with power. Your introduction, the power of your introduction caught us, caught our attention. The power of your voice showed us how passionate you are about this whole topic. And the power of the words you chose today showed us the kind of research you have done on this entire project. Kudos to you and congratulations to target speaker for such a fabulous speech. Your entire speech, because of your voice modulation, your expression, the words like epitome of beauty and brains and democracy and you know, such beautiful words that you had used throughout, gave us that feeling that yes, you are fully prepared and you are actually passionate about Cleopatra. However, now I would also like to look at few points of recommendation for you. And that would be, one, the first one would be, again, going back to your previous evaluation, which was on your speed. So today I felt your speed was okay and you know, it was manageable for me as a listener. So that's part of it, I'll give you a check mark and you're good to go on that. Coming to the creative part of it, I think, why when you use that question, I think that was where you probably got in your creativeness. Uh, I'm not sure, but I would say you do clear this project from a purpose perspective and from the previous feedback. How are few points of feedback from me as well from today's speech would be, one. So there was this point in the middle of the speech where you spoke about as a ten-year-old flip through the pages of Insider. Look here. I wish that part had come in the beginning. That would have been a beautiful start to your story where you're actually talking about how the ten-year-old started flipping through those pages. Another thing I wish I could know right at the beginning, if I could understand that Cleopatra, to just set that condition, I think would have been really, it was as powerful as your introduction was, I missed that power in your conclusion. Wish that could have also been taken care of, yes? So overall, to summarize, lessons in power or not, it was surely a lesson, it was surely a speech with a lot of power. Congratulations for successfully completing this project and taking care of your previous feedback of speed and creativity. Thank you.
Thank you Toastmaster Leshmi. Now let me call upon the third evaluator, Toastmaster Aparna to evaluate the third speaker.
Thank you very much Toastmaster Pranav. Toastmaster Dhwani, if there is a session that I'd like to attend, it would be yours. Simply because you are probably the most respectful and kind facilitator that I have seen in a very long time, which is one of the criterias to evaluate this particular project. Extremely respectful with every disruption, no matter how, to what level they kept going, keeping that, what would you say, that sense of calmness and your presence of mind all through is no easy task. And you did that really well and I believe you have a natural inclination to be that calm person which is working in your favor, especially when disruptions happen. The important thing is when a disruption happens, it is so important to get back to the speech and keep going in that flow. Initially, there was a little bit of a hesitation, but then after the first disruption, you had your nerves about and quickly, when the disruption finished, you came back, you came on stream and you knew where you left. You did not ponder, you did not wonder, oh, where did I stop? Which normally happens to the best of trainers and speakers. That didn't happen to you, not even in one place. You came back and you started there and you kept going till you finished the goal in sight. You just went towards it wonderfully done and that is, that was your strength today. Now, fixing, moving on to what can work better for you. Most of these disruptions were extremely, extremely strong disruptions because there wasn't one disruptor. There were like a group of people ganging up against you. The strategy that you used was right, that is, get into that situation and dissolve it. However, we dissolve it quickly. You get into the situation, example, when there was a discussion around biking and cars, you got drawn into it way too much. Instead, you could have just said, oh, all that is great, but let's get back and talk more about it towards the end. Quickly, get out of the situation quickly or they're going to take an upper hand. Because if you see the disruptors always start hesitating and then they grow stronger. That's what bullies do, right? And we were basically showing a few of their characters. So always get them out before they get their power. So disruptions have to be nailed quickly, whatever strategy you use. Uh, the second thing is, yes, you had energy when you came back, but keep in mind, the energy of the audience will always drop when a disruption happens. Because we are totally gone, we don't know what's happening. So pay attention to that, the energy of the audience. Come back and say, hey people, see what happened now, you know something? Do something funny, humorous is the best way to kind of ease the situation and then calm it on. Show them you are in control. Show them you are in control, bring back, that is the way you can get your audience back. So think of, keep the audience in mind, not just how well you perform, but also your audience because this is a show you're putting for them, right? So that said, I also want to share a couple of things. Being assertive is the key thing here. And the best way is to be assertive is to come closer, speak slowly, speak clearly and loudly and you have no idea how nerve-wracking that can be. Don't stand far, come closer and do that even on a physical platform. So just keep this in mind, I'll share a few more on the evaluation thing, but other than that, I think beautifully handled. Very respectful, great enthusiasm, just handle them with more, you know, with more energy and enthusiasm, that's all. Thank you very much and back to you.
Thank you Toastmaster Aparna. Now I call upon Saurav to evaluate me.
Thank you so much Toastmaster of the day, I have the pleasure of evaluating you today. This particular project, a few days back on the global international Toastmasters group, there was someone who made a comment that a lot of people do the team odd role for completing this project and that's not right. And that person was bang on because this project is not only about being a team, right? So this is where there's a very incomplete understanding of this project. Most people who attempt this project don't go through the project documents. And I think that's where, first of all, Pranav, I'll give a lot of credit to you. You have gone through the project document, you understood the requirements of the project and you took control over the project right from the word go. You are a part of a club and I know this because I am also. You are a part of a club and I know this because I am also a part of the same club that. Where already there are some very set processes in terms of getting role takers, in terms of roasters, in terms of, you know, the promotions, everything. So even if you don't move a finger, the meetings happen, you know, as like a gate walk. So how do you show your value in such a case? It's very easy for you to show a value where things are not going well. And this is where you did a brilliant job in terms of getting into it, getting into the action. Whether it's finding the role takers, whether it's floating the roster, whether it's connecting with me. You know, everything that you have done till now for the meeting was perfectly done. I was very, very impressed with all that. I am also very impressed with the kind of follow-ups that you have been continuously doing. There has not been any slip, you know, no surprises. We had a big surprise, right? You know, unexpected, she actually fell, you know, became sick and she was not able to attend. We had a last minute evaluator change. We had a change in your evaluator as well. We had a change in the presiding officer. And I was expecting you will do one mistake somewhere, right? Where you will, you know, either call out the wrong presiding officer or the wrong evaluator and boy, you disappointed me. You did not, you did not give me one scope to point out saying that Shatanya, you did not do this, you did not find this or you did not mention this. Great job done. Now coming to the, to the, to the role of a T mod, okay, from I straight away see a yellow. I don't know where the green went. Anyways, coming to the T mod role. Where is the theme? The theme is missing. I saw very less discussion around the theme. I saw hardly an interactions and the theme that you choose was such a beautiful theme for you to engage people. And that is something that was thoroughly missing during the entire role of a T mod. You did a good job in terms of calling the evaluators, introducing people, everything was perfect. Okay, the time, Shatanya, you're confusing me with the time. So we are on green?
Yes, Sarav. It's two minute forty seven.
Okay, so you know, so, so all of those things were perfectly fine. But you had a wonderful opportunity in terms of engaging people. You could have asked people stories. You did ask, you said that, you know, can you reminisce? And then one of the speakers, I think Aparna mentioned that, what do I reminisce about? Fair question. What do I reminisce about? Make it more specific. You reminisce about Toastmasters, you reminisce about something, you know, something very specific. If you really want people to speak, give them a perimeter within which they will speak. Then only they will be able to do justice to the question. So in terms of the pre-meeting planning, I would give you an easily eight point five or a nine out of ten. In terms of the role of the Toastmaster of the day, I think there is a sufficient room for improvement. Particularly when you're choosing a theme so beautiful where people can engage. Not giving them an adequate opportunity to engage is gross injustice to the theme itself. Thank you. Back to you Toastmaster of the day.
Thank you Sarav for that evaluation. Now I would like to ask the timer, are all the evaluators within the time?
Hi Toastmaster of the day Pranav. I had missed out on the initial ten to twelve seconds of the first evaluator, Joan. And after that I had timed her, she, she had finished her evaluation in three minutes thirty seconds. So I think she went out of time apart from that.
I, I just wanted to make sure, make sure this one. Pranav, I just have a question. Is it like in Gabby's that you show the yellow card first and then the green card and then the red card? Because when I was speaking, I saw the green, yellow green, then I saw green. So I thought the timer made a mistake and then he said, showed the green and then I thought the red card.
Yeah, it is a mistake. There was a little bit of a dis, there was a little bit of a disruption in terms of timing cards. So we will apply the contest norms, which is that every, if there's a timing device failure, all contestants will get a thirty seconds extra. So I think we can qualify all the, all the evaluators.
Thank you Sarav.
Now I would like to call upon the general evaluator, Vira, to give the report on the meeting.
Thank you so much Toastmaster of the day, Toastmaster Pranav. I also see the poll is out for the best evaluator. So I would request folks to take ten seconds to quickly vote for your best evaluator among the four evaluators that we had. I have done mine and. Yes, I think we can go forward with the general evaluation. First off, I would request every single one of you to please unmute and give a huge round of applause for the wonderful meeting that we had today. Please. Brilliant. Thank you so much. Thanks a lot everyone. So let's quickly start off from the pre-meeting logistics that happened. Be it arranging the role takers, I think there were not just one person who was helping out with arranging the role takers. In the absence of a couple of folks, I think a lot of people present that really brings about the team spirit that you have in the gabby's. So all the role takers are arranged, it was promptly there. I also noted that the WhatsApp group was created and every communication was passing through very clearly. And one beautiful thing, I remember Toastmaster Nancy was mentioning, let's not have a same role taker taking up two roles. Unless it's the case of an essay and that just only applies for essay or presiding officer. So that was also really good. That way we give opportunities to many people to take up the roles, right? So that was great and the agenda, the meeting background, everything was shared ahead of time and all the WhatsApp groups are notified. So wonderfully done there. And even before the meeting started, we had people joining in. So that's always a good thing that I have noted in the gabby's. What I would have loved there is, there were a few interactions happening. But probably if we have someone who is moderating like, okay, there are new guests who are coming in. Maybe we can have a quick chat with them, just a quick icebreaker kind of thing. So that would have just kept that. I know we do our AV checks sometimes, but I, I'm not sure if I missed out on it because it was done earlier. But I didn't see it happening for a couple of folks because during the meeting, there were a few AV check, AV related issues that were happening. So if we could structure it like how we have been doing before, that would make it really consistent. And we started bang on time, seven thirty and Toastmaster Shaitanya, I really love how you started the meeting. Because as I say, the energy that you set, that brings the entire, that sets the tone for the entire meeting. And you also clearly moderated on the rules that you had and you structured them really well. And you seamlessly handed it over to our presiding officer, distinguished Toastmaster Sarav. And Sarav, you also had very clean and crisp introduction. You also set the stage bell for what is going to come up. You welcome the guests promptly and also about what is going on with the clubs with the two meetings that we are having every week. So ticked off all the boxes and you clearly handed it over to our Toastmaster of the day. Also, you had in mind about introducing how the speech or rather the project of Toastmaster of the day is going to be. So job well done. Toastmaster Pranav, I think on top of being the TMOD, you were also attempting a project today. I think you did a brilliant job there because you were seamlessly stitching the entire session through. You had, you had clearly noted down what were the three sections that, what were the sections that we are having today. And how each of the section is going to go, you had introductions for everyone. And I also love the reminder that you gave for the icebreaker speech that we will be giving a standing ovation. Because sometimes we tend to miss it and also you introduced the speakers in a, in the prescribed way of the name, speech title, speech title name. So well done. Just a small suggestion for you is introductions, sometimes they tend to get repetitive. Probably if you could have cut short on introductions like one or two lines. Or maybe weave them along the lines of the theme, like your evaluator, this English Toastmaster, Saurav was mentioning. You could have spoken more about the theme today or maybe the question that you asked, right? Like what is the one thing which, when you go down your memory lane, how it would be? So if you had weave that as the introduction of each of the speaker, that would have really kept the meeting even more engaging and lively. Other than that, you did a wonderful job and congratulations for completing your project. And let me quickly hear from. Do we have Devshish anymore? I think he had a power pocket issue. I want to know the speech timings that were taken for the speakers.
He has sent me the speech timings.
Okay, yes, over to Toastmaster Shaitanya.
Thank you generally evaluator. For speaker one, which is Toastmaster Sanjana, her duration was six minute forty six seconds, which is sixteen seconds more than the allotted time. Then for Toastmaster Devyani, it was six minute ten seconds. And for Toastmaster Dhvani Adesara, it is twelve minutes ten seconds.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much Toastmaster Shaitanya. And yes, as I listen to these timings, let me also hear from, let me also explain the evaluations of the speech evaluators that we had. I'm keeping on hold that I'll come to the remission because I would love for them to evaluate myself. So first off, a quick one liner for all the speakers that we had, Toastmaster Sanjana. Congratulations because you stepped up and started your path today and with the icebreaker, it was a killer performance, wonderfully written speech. Filled with metaphors, loved it. Small thing to keep in mind, your camera angle. If you could have kept it in a way that you are not looking down upon it, that would have really made it even more engaging. Other than that, keep rocking. Quickly up to our first evaluated Toastmaster Joan, it was a super detailed evaluation. You gave really good examples of how Sanjana can work upon the examples were very specific. And that is how an evaluation should be, right? I mean, rather than just saying, okay, these are all the things that you need to work on. Give examples as in how she needs to work upon and how that is going to help impact the upcoming speeches. And one small suggestion that I would, in my humble opinion, is that. You could have cut short the number of recommendations that you have, not just for an icebreaker, in general for any speech evaluation, right? We generally tend to have a structure. We focus more on the positives and then give like two specific recommendations. So today I noted that you had three. It is a good thing, but I felt, okay, for an icebreaker. At this point, I understand for a speaker of Sanjana's caliber, the recommendations are necessary. But keeping the time also in mind, if you could have restricted with two specific recommendations so that you also get enough time. To summarize at the end, what are all the positives, what are the two recommendations? That would have really given you ample amount of time to go through your evaluation well. Other than that, there was a super detailed evaluation and coming up, Toastmaster Devyani, you ace the storytelling aspect, beautiful delivery. Just a little bit focus on giving an impactful conclusion because you still had time left. That would really leave the audience with something to take back. So that is small suggestion from my end. Toastmaster Lakshmi, again, a brilliant attempt from your side to deliver your evaluation as a speech. Because you did not, I saw that you were standing and delivering it full on with confidence without any notes in front of you. So great job. I, but unfortunately, I could not hear most of your recommendations because of the network glitches that you had. So I think if you could have checked it ahead of time or maybe checked with another network. And I'm sure that you will be sharing your evaluation sheet with Toastmaster Devyani. So Toastmaster Devyani, please feel free to reach out to Toastmaster Lakshmi for getting the evaluation clearly written down. Again, our third speaker, Toastmaster Dhvani, I must say your voice is your biggest bless. Because that aids in your delivery and you have very good control over your voice and your pace. And like Toastmaster Aparna was mentioning, your content was slightly getting digressed because you were spending a lot of time in pacifying your. Interrupters or bullies, but otherwise your entire speech, how you had a control over your voice, how you're delivering, great job. And Toastmaster Aparna, I know you are an amazing evaluator. You keep leaving us in awe with your evaluations. And the recommendation, I could not even think about it. I mean, I was thinking, okay, probably you would comment on how she can reduce down the timing of it. But your recommendation was like to the point, on dot and out of the box again. So. I learned something new. Thank you so much for that. And this English Toastmaster Saurav, again, it was a very well put together evaluation. I, I don't have any comments to add on it. You had covered all the major points that were needed. And you also made sure that you are acknowledging the fact that it was not just a project of being a team odd. It's also about taking care of the things and how effectively the entire meeting is getting managed. So great with all the evaluators. And yes, now it is time for me to hear from our counter and grammarian. Over to our counter for the day, Toastmaster Arvind.
Yeah, thank you Vera. Is it, is it okay? Can I share my screen? I do have an Excel sheet where I can actually project it.
Yes, you can go ahead. I hope you have access to share your screen.
Yes, I have given it now.
All right. It's my, sorry. Sorry about that, just. So just sharing my screen quickly. I'm sorry guys. Sorry about it. That's my little one walking in the room. First of all, there's so much of energy and brilliance in the room that I was engrossed in most of the speeches which is going on. It was too difficult for me to track most of the Rs,ums, repetitions, etc. But I've tried, tried to, you know, do justice to what I know the role which is assigned. Just quickly calling out, I'm not getting into much of details. Chaitanya, I guess, you know, you had fallen in love with the word or and, I know you had so much of energy, did deliver it well. And was a little bit more evident in mostly towards the end, at least when you were, you know, giving the evaluation. Sort of, I couldn't really catch you much except that one or two pillows like, I know, so etc. Probably it would have been a part of the flow. It was a little difficult to catch whether it was a repetition or not. But then yes, these, these are very few which I could really catch. Pranav, a couple of areas, you had a couple of pauses, a couple of Rs, um, or etc. Sanjana, hats off. I, I remember my first icebreaker speech. You know, in my previous in the Toastmasters Club, but you, you've done extremely well. There isn't anything that I could really call out, just that one word could like, you had to use and you kind of repeated it once. Devyani, of course, there was, there isn't anything which to be pointed out, except that one repeat and a few one or two pauses in between. Dhvani, I know you had, I know you had a lot of, you had a tough time. Many people try to interrupt in between because that is exactly what was the, the speech all about. And yeah, a few words like, you know, that's when I etc were repeated a couple of times. Maybe it would have been needed in the conversation, but I know just to mention that. Joan, beautifully delivered, there were, you know, one or two repeats. You had actually repeated the word amazing a couple of times, or rather two times for that matter. You know, ones, yeah, ones, etc. Lakshmi. A couple of, maybe once or two, actually unfortunately, your voice wasn't very clear. So you know, we can actually get the benefit of doubt where you, you know, you had your one or two repeats, pauses, etc. Aparna. Way too difficult. I, I try to be as critical as possible. Just once or twice and one repeat as well. That's it. And Vera. Sorry, I, I got a little confused with, you know, to remember. So Vera, I guess, I got a little confused between Chaitanya and Vera. Sorry about it. So Vera, you had a couple of ands and everything together and Chaitanya, yours, yours is, and I confused between Vera and Chaitanya. Sorry about this. Devashish, it was the initial one. So we had a couple of one or two Rs. And a total of, total number was eight. I myself fumbled quite a bit. I had a lot of Rs,ums in between. That's what I could catch. After which I became a little more conscious, I didn't remember what was done. Shilpa, you had the one R, that's what I could catch and Prabha, one or two Rs and one or two repeats, etc. Yeah, overall. Overall excellent show. As I said, you know, there's so much of energy amongst the speakers and evaluators. Thank you.
Thank you so much Toastmaster. I've given the huge round of applause. It was such a detailed evaluation that you had delivered. And also I like the fact how you have detailed, in detail noted down individually, what are all the clutch words? And how you phrased it saying you fell in love with that particular word. So brilliant job. So thank you so much. And also you paid some attention to what you spoke and had the arguments there as well. Great. And I read that that is your first time as a role taker at the Gabby's. So again, a huge round of applause again. Well done there. And yes, let's hear from our grammarian for the Toastmaster Shilpa. Over to.
Wow, what an evening. I'm glad I've taken the role of grammarian. So I'll start with sharing the outstanding words that have been used by all the speakers. Which I love the most this part. Slot, sluggish, antiquity, pharaoh, feisty and ponder. Special words which we tend to use but we forget. Stumbling, precision, surreal, accolades, enticed, persuasive, epitome. Skeptical, disruption and metaphor. I must have missed a few words, excuse me for that. There are a few areas where improper language has been used. Someone said showcasing, it would be, I would show. Someone said showcasing, it would be, I would showcase because it's future tense. It is very catching, it is catchy. Let me hold you guys, has been used by one of the speakers, let me hold the thoughts there, could have been better usage. Nor or nor is used twice, it's neither or nor. Um, someone used too specific, you could have used more specific rather than too specific. There is one, uh, suggestion where an inappropriate word is used, hello, while addressing the audience, it sounded a little rude. Uh, could have used some other word, saying, excuse me or pardon me for, or, um. Please excuse me for interrupting your kind of words. So thank you, I, I congratulate Devyani, Pranav. Uh, and special shout out to Diana who used the word of the day so many times in her speech. Uh, congratulations Diana, and you all should read the speech, what she has messaged in the chat box. Please go through it, loved it. On a funny note, I would like to end the report by sharing this thought by Saurav. Why should we always be fair but not dark? I think a thought or a topic that we can have some speeches on or a theme of the day. I will remember this and I'm, I'm sure I'll deliver a speech on it someday. But thank you, Pranav, for the opportunity and this is your show, man. Congratulations, you did a wonderful job. Thank you again.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Shilpa. I love, um, your intent. The Merian's report was and also the fact that when you were also saying the subtle directions that were required in the usage of the language. You did not mention the speaker's name. So that was very well done and love how you ended your report also. I am looking forward to your speech. Awesome. So I know we are, uh, slightly running, uh, uh, late. But I just had one comment for, uh, Toastmaster Chaitanya. Thank you so much for stepping in and taking up the timer role when there was, uh, an issue with Toastmaster Devshish's of power. So thanks again. I think like the issue which we were discussing during the evaluation session. Yeah, it, it would have been better if you could have paid a little bit more attention with the timer cards which were being displayed. Because I did notice for two, three evaluations, the green and yellow was going front and back again and again. So just a small thing to keep in mind, but otherwise, thank you so much once again for taking up the role at the last moment. And our, our company and grammarian, both of you did a beautiful job, the reports were so detailed. Just a small thing to keep in mind, if at all possible, the keeping the time in mind in the upcoming meetings. If you get a chance, you can also add in a small tip as in how the speakers can reduce the number of filler words or the clutch words. And what they can do to work upon their ground. So that would really help the audience with the takeaway message going back. Awesome. That brings us to the closure of the G session. Now I would like to hand it back to our most exciting listener session that we have. Over to you, Toastmaster Prabha for the listener session.
Uh, thank you, Veera. So let's test how actively you were listening to this meeting. So, uh, if, for, for one of the speakers, while she was reminiscing her, one of the stories. Uh, and she got interrupted by a lot of people. I want to know like what was the topic going on and what was the first interruption, uh, topic was. If anybody can tell.
Uh, running a rat race, that's twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Okay, let's move on to second question. And, uh, this is, uh, about another speaker who, who got, uh, who, who cleared J E exam and. Got a rank. I want to know what was the rank.
Three, one, three, two.
Great. Yeah, that's correct. All right, moving on to the second question about that same speaker. Uh, what was the, uh, uh, what was the monthly cost of her batting, uh, badminton, uh, coaching classes?
Ten thousand.
Six thousand, packet was ten thousand.
Six thousand, uh.
Yes, 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 that's correct. It was six thousand and total it was thirty thousand. Okay, all right. So moving on to the third speaker and her story. And, uh, the research she conducted was thorough. And I want to know like how many, uh, what was the queen of ancient Egypt? Who was very influential and.
You were.
That's correct. And how many languages she knew at, at that time? Correct, that's correct. And, uh, she was connected to one of the, uh, significant, uh, ancient libraries of the world. What was the name of that library?
Alexandra, something.
Yeah, yeah. So it was the great library of Alexandria. That's correct. So yeah, that's all, uh, uh, about our testing of listening skills. Over to you, Devashish, or, sorry.
Thank you, thank you so much, Toastmaster. No worries. Thank you so much, Toastmaster Prabha, for that really engaging, uh, listener session that we had. And yes, uh, it was overall a really engaging and wonderful meeting filled with lot of energy. If we can just keep in mind the little subtleties in the roles, I think we'll definitely keep rocking as usual. Thank you so much once again for having me and I would like to hand it back over to our Toastmaster of the day, Toastmaster Pranav.
Thank you, Toastmaster Veera. Since we are already running out of time, I would like to hand over the meeting to the Presiding Officer. Saro.
Thank you so much. So, uh, and thank you everyone, all the role takers for a great meeting. Uh, so I will launch the poll for the best role takers and while I do that, as I promised to Dina. I would be reading out this wonderful speech that she has written here for us. Uh, so the, the, the question that I asked Dina for the table topic is. Which shit, which city does she lives in and what is nice about the city? What does she love the most about the city? And what a wonderful message that she has written for us. I'm in Bowmanville, Ontario, which is in Canada. I came to Toastmasters about non-twenty-nine years. I'm improving with my speech as a better of disability is strong and in fire in this Toastmaster meeting. I feel that part of the Toastmasters Club, but I know this reminisces about leadership, reminisce with my disability. Why I do that? To be a part of speaking front of people who reminisce that nerves. Reminisce up there as stage, reminisce, use deep breath, go up the stage and reminisce. I know that feel inside that in fire Toastmaster Clubs reminisce. And I did open my eye to speech that powerful inside reminisce which enverate reminisce this club. This club meeting reminisce with improve that speak powerful reminisces. I felt so excited to speak to all of you, reminisces, thanking Toastmaster, Madame Dina. Thank you so much, Dina. Lovely speech. I really love reading it out. As I said, I was so looking forward to read this out at the end of this meeting. And with this, we come to the, almost to the end of this meeting. And I would take a few, um, feedback from the audience and I would start with, uh. I would start with Dean, our only guest we have today, the rest of us are role takers. So Dina, you want to share, how did you like the meeting? You can put it in chat or you can unmute yourself and tell us also, whatever you want. Thank you, Dina. I understand what you are saying. It's very good. Thank you so much. Thank you. And we love it when you join us, Dina. We love you. Thank you so much for joining us. Thank you, thank you, Dina. And with this, I would now announce the results of the, of the polls that we conducted today. So let me start with the best auxiliary role taker. The best auxiliary role taker for today's meeting is our grammarian for today, Toastmaster Shilpa Eddy. Congratulations, Toastmaster Shilpa. Thank you so much. And you must thank Dina for using the word of the day for so many times. Thank you, Dina, once again. The best.
Thank you, Dina. I loved it.
Absolutely, we loved it. We never knew we could use so many uses of reminisce you could have, right? She, she showed us the way. And the best evaluator, this was a tough one today because we had two division champions in the meeting. Eval- division evaluation champions in the meeting. One is Joan Joseph, the other one is Apparna. We had an area champion, Toastmaster Lakshmi. And finally, the person who takes the cake is Toastmaster Apparna Raja. Congratulations, Toastmaster Apparna for being the best evaluator today. And coming to the best role taker. It was a competition between enthusiasm and experience. And finally, it's experience that wins. Congratulations, Toastmaster Veera Santiram for being the best role taker as the general evaluator for today.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for joining and congratulations, Veera, for being the division director-elect of Division D, District ninety-two. And Dina, the most enthusiastic and the most sincere participation goes to you. So I'm putting you on spotlight. Can we have a big round of applause for Dina? Because she definitely has earned it with all the enthusiasm that she has shown during this entire meeting. Thank you, Dina. A big round of applause for you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for joining us. With this, I adjourn this meet- meeting of the Gabby's Toastmasters Club. We will meet again on Saturday, ten AM, Indian Standard Time, and again on Tuesday, seven thirty PM, Indian Standard Time. Bye, see you guys.
Thanks, everyone. Bye bye.
Thank you, everyone. Bye bye.